Okay, it's four oh two and we're gonna start the town Sangaville's select board meeting. It's Wednesday, June twenty second, twenty twenty-two. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, select board meeting minutes, six eight twenty-two and six ten twenty-two.
Make motion to approve both.
Second. All in favor? All three in favor? Item three, review of treasurer's warrants, payroll forty-nine, fifty, fifty-two, accounts payable forty-eight and fifty-one.
Make motion to approve A and B's red.
Second.
All in favor? All three in favor? Open session. Anybody want us to speak today? No?
Next one.
Next one. I had a feeling that's where we're going. I'm guessing, so. All business in that is our bulldozer and there's, there are no current bids.
There are no current bids.
And is that why you guys are here?
That is why we're here.
Okay.
Where does it go from here with the dozer? Is it going up to rebid?
Typically, that's what we just would rerun it normally.
Is it open to make a bid?
I would say yes, it is. Wouldn't you?
Could be.
Yeah.
If, if I could, I'd make a bid of fourteen thousand five hundred and pay for it today.
I don't think we can do that, but.
No, that's, would be, I mean, if, I don't think we can legally do that.
No, can't do that.
Maybe we could. I'm not sure that I would want to anyway, no.
I mean, the reason why I'm staying at twenty is, and again, before I get posted this time, we asked contractor, what should that be selling for?
Yeah, we got it at nineteen-five.
If it was at your, what would, what would your minimum bid be? That's where that number came from. If you look on Facebook, there's other dozers very compatible for that money and more.
The one, the one in Rehoboth, Mass, I've talked to the guy a couple times on it and I can buy it for less than the minimum bid and it's full of service, but I don't go to Mass to get it. And this one, I know some history on it. I've actually operated this dozer. You know, taxpayer in the town, like to.
So right now, we're asking nineteen-five. That's a minimum bid.
Yeah. So I, my thought is, maybe we relist it, either with no minimum bid, or reduce the minimum bid, or just do exactly what we did. I mean, obviously, if we don't, if we don't reduce the minimum bid, you're not gonna bid on it because you don't wanna pay that. I get that. But if we made it no minimum bid, at least it would be fair.
What if you listed a minimum bid, fourteen?
We could do that. We could do anything we want, but I don't think.
Fourteen is a number you would be interested in.
It doesn't seem fair to take something less than what our minimum bid was today when we ran it all that time at nineteen and change.
Right, and everyone else is sitting there and saying, well, that's, that's the minimum, that's all they're gonna sell it at.
Correct.
So I think that would be the thing to do, is to relist it. Relist it inside.
Do you wanna do minimum fourteen-five and run it for a week?
We, we assume that the way that article was written, that if you have no bids, then you were free to sell it.
I don't think we're free to do that.
Well, I, I, if we hadn't said minimum, I, I, if we had just said bids, but because we cut everybody out at nineteen, below nineteen, that doesn't seem really.
Right, there might be other people out there that said, you should oughta give you seventeen.
Correct. That's why you said, that doesn't seem fair to the town.
Nineteen-five, you know what I mean? That's what I'm worried about. That's why I would be, I'm okay to relist it with a minimum bid close to what you would be.
The worst thing that could happen to us is we end up at a town meeting, some guy stands up and says, you know, you ran that thing for nineteen, I would've paid eighteen all day.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right, right.
And we all know how bids work. You could run this next time at minimum bid fourteen, we'll get a bid at forty.
Yeah, yep, yep.
It's already happened, so.
Yep.
And I don't, I don't, how long did we run it?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So I don't.
We have the next town meeting scheduled.
Oh, yeah, what's our next one?
Six. The six.
Yeah, two of them. Let's do it for that at fourteen-five. That's all right?
Yep.
Yep. And that's fair to, I mean, if you get it, you get it and.
I wouldn't wanna be on the other side of that if I, because I haven't bid on it.
Correct.
Cause I don't wanna pay nineteen-five for it. And I'd have been upset if somebody sat here and bought it for fourteen.
Right, exactly.
Exactly right.
So you don't exactly what I'm saying. Follow-up, look at it. I wish it were there.
I just think, I think this is the best way to do it. And if you, you know what I mean? If you end up with it, great, I'm happy.
So we're gonna make it fourteen-five?
Yep, minimum.
Minimum, and the due date will be the sixth?
Yep.
Okay, we'll put it on the web tomorrow.
That way, there, if it comes out the sixth, then actually, why don't you do it for the fifth? And that way, there, we're.
We'll do it at the fifth, yeah? We'll do it for the fifth. End of day business on the fifth.
Yeah, and, should we, I, we have a right to accept bids on the spot. They don't have to be, if somebody could come here and bid it up.
Right.
I don't know if we should say that in the ad, or.
I just, just leave it the way it is.
Close it, leave it, keep it.
Close it on the fifth. We have a meeting on the sixth. She can tell us what the bids are. We have one, we're good. And we don't give them any.
And are they sealed bids? They're sealed bids.
They'll go to her.
Right, okay, yeah, okay.
So the process of bidding would be to come in, fill out a bid form with you.
You could actually just write out something, put it on an envelope. Fold it in half. Fold it in half, yeah, and give it to me.
Those are big.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I think we've had people in the past before actually send a message through the, right through the Facebook.
Yeah, you can send it to Facebook, you can email me, you can just bring it in. Can you, can you do a pri, I mean, I don't know anything about Facebook. Can you do it privately? Like, so that people don't see what Jeff did?
Sure, you can send her a message right over pay, right through the ad.
Okay.
Just an email to the town manager.
An email.
Oh, I thought it was all, yeah.
Well, it's on.
You could write it on it, yeah.
The old school.
Just bring it in, it's the old fashioned way. Bring it in, drop it off. Put a piece of paper on it, and you're a little bit. Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
So they'll all be closed bids again?
Yeah, that's what we've always done. I think it's most fair.
So even if, if anyone came on the sixth, if they came with an envelope and handed it to us, we would open it the night of the meeting? Is that correct?
We've done that in the past.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
That's why we're saying we're closing it on the fifth. Okay.
We got into that one night and we did it. And there was questions afterwards, was that really the right thing to do?
Okay, so we're closing it.
I think if we close at the fifth, then you don't get into that.
Yeah.
I don't know what difference it makes. If they're sitting here with an envelope and it says nineteen-five, I'd like to see what's in it.
But, but, we're not opening.
You can't do that. You can't, after you've already looked at the others and you're okay with the others.
Well, they gotta turn them in. When we, yeah, it's gotta be on the desk, but they could bring it with them that day. I don't care. I don't know why we would care.
But they all get revealed at the same time?
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, then that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he doesn't, they don't get to sit and see everybody else's bid in that picture. This is open, this is open. No, you put it down, you're in the game.
That's after the four, but yeah, that's not how we're gonna do it. Or that's not how I wanna be involved in it.
No, 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 that doesn't work.
But we've had some items that the spread was unbelievable, un, like unimaginable. Like fifteen thousand dollars spread.
Different.
No, more than that.
Yeah, all sitting on the table.
I actually felt bad because I opened one one night and, I don't know, the gentleman was in the room and I was very excited when I saw that number.
The amount.
It was very obvious that I was excited after I reviewed it.
I mean, none of it's our money, but we just, it helps the town a lot.
It was very nice for the town.
So, when's it closing?
Whatever you wanna do.
But.
At the meeting.
At the meeting. All, all bids have to be submitted for the meeting. We all put them at the meeting.
Okay. That's, that, that makes it fair.
And if I can, one final question on the bulldozer.
Yeah?
I would like to just start it, lift the blade, check the blade.
Yeah, you can come, just.
Do you have a key?
Yeah, call me and I'll meet you over there and you can start it right up, no problem.
And even this winter, Jeff and I went up there, it hadn't been started for a very long time, and I think it flopped three times.
Is that right?
And it started right up. I was impressed, cause it was in the cold room, you know what I mean? It's been right there the whole time and it fired right up.
The battery was fine, I think?
Yep, hundred percent.
Wow.
Didn't even echo.
Yeah, so just let me know and I'll meet you right up there. Very good.
Do I need one?
Yes, absolutely. Happy, happy hay, if I see it.
If I see it.
Well, we just go over, I have the keys with me at this time. All right.
Oh, no, we've.
Okay.
You better let him?
Yeah, we just, we just sit there and say. Okay, I, I think that's a good solution. New business. Do you, do you, Unitarian Universalist Church fuel assistance?
So I'm just gonna read this. We received it from the church. It says, Mrs. Bell and board members, please find and close a letter sent to John McCusick arranging for payment for emergency fuel assistance for Sangaville residents. As you know, the Sangaville Public Library generously gave us five thousand dollars towards our already existing fuel assistance program. We ask that you forward requests for fuel assistance to McCusick for delivery of a hundred gallons. Should the request be made from an AE Robinson customer, they would have to provide McCusick with a physical address for delivery. And they would contact us when the funds were depleted. So they're asking us if we would.
So if you get anybody for fuel assistance, just tell them to call McCusick.
Yes, we.
No?
Yeah, we could arrange a hundred gallons and they will let us know when it runs out.
Okay, that's, that's nice of them.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I, I'll be shocked if it doesn't run out before the end of the season.
That's great.
Uh, okay. Town manager report. Property safety survey, just, we, we had a safety audit, is that a fair way to describe it?
Oh, you had an insurance audit.
Insurance audit, and you actually, Dale was actually present for that. And this report is the upshot of that visit with it. You participated in. Nobody knows this yet. I don't think, we haven't had a meeting, so.
No, no.
So we had the, we had the audit, we had a report, and then we also had a follow-up from our insurance company that really was the upshot of all of that. Uh, so I'm not sure how we wanna present it, but.
I guess the long and short of it was to send it for property as for casualty, our insurance company, we will have general liability coverage on the building starting July first, and that will end September thirtieth.
So I would rephrase that. We will only.
We will only have start in July first.
Correct.
Liability insurance.
Our insurance company has officially deemed the building uninsurable.
Yes, as, I'm, I'm reading her letter here.
So the structure itself is not insured.
It's unsafe.
Is, and, and not insurable.
Correct.
Numerous serious concerns regarding the structural integrity of the town office from the foundation to the roof.
There was, there was one memo that had a, a July date.
So I see it, oh, right here.
July first.
Yeah. Yep, September one twenty-two. With that said, we progressively have to conclude, exclude property coverage to the town office effective July first twenty-two.
The nine thirty date, we don't know if we'll have liability after that. I read that as a way that we won't have.
I read it, when speaking with her, I read it as we're not going to have insurance.
At all.
At all.
No liability.
No liability on this building.
Which really means.
Well, you got no liability for the town. The building is, the building's uninsured as of June. If it burns flat, we don't get a nickel.
We don't get a nickel, correct.
But our liability is intact. If we have a slip and fall, or any incident, we're, we're covered, but only until September thirtieth. Then after that, we lose our liability as long as we're in this location, which is really untenable. It's not a condition that we can allow to happen.
No.
So, um, we, we've, I, Laura and I have already had some conversations. She, she started looking for rental properties. Backing up a little bit, we had talked some about Robinson's property as a possibility for, I've had some conversations with Mr. Robinson. He's had the building assessed. His project is moving ahead exactly the way he hoped. I think Guilford's gonna be up and running by October, he thinks.
Wow.
Uh, and then, once, once that's done, he'll, the, the pumps and the awnings and the tanks all comes out of Sangaville. He's gonna repave that parking lot. And he's had it assessed. It's, it was, I don't remember the exact number, but it was low three hundred thousands. And so that would, it's, he's willing to sell it to us for that assessed value. I suspect that we would be reluctant to. I said to him, we'd probably spend three hundred thousand to build our own building before we buy someone else's because the, we're getting taxes on that building.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a loose lube.
Yeah, we'd almost be crazy to do that.
Right, right.
So I don't, we'll see, but right now, I'm not thinking that's a real strong option for us.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we, and even if we decided, if we could get the green light to build something, we, we don't really have time to figure all that out. We've got to find a place to do the town's business in the next ninety days.
Right.
Well, let's back up just a little bit. This audit that we just had. This is really a top to bottom audit. This isn't just a foundation issue. This is the entire structure.
Yeah, there's eleven pages here.
The, the foundation compared to what it was two years ago when we were down there is crazy how much worse it's gotten.
Was that right? It's bad.
It's, yes, it's bad. Um, the movement is just, it's a lot.
Wow.
So I mean, before we mainly, that was kinda like the main concern.
Right.
But, I mean, he went all the way into the attic. He's got major concerns up there. With the structure, the weight load that's up there, the balconies are sagging. I mean, there's a lot of things going on, top to bottom.
And that's all, all well documented in this report?
Yeah, some of these things are, you know, things like inspecting fire extinguishers.
Right, right.
We've got some wiring that is, I mean, those are things that.
Petty.
Yeah, you, you could fix those, and you should fix those. But, I mean, then he's got things like potential lead paint.
Right.
The sagging balconies were like, that was not good.
And that's actually, I was amazed, cause, and I, I've been up there many times and I, when you stand on the stage and you sight across that, it's, it's visual.
It's, it's very obvious.
Yes.
Wow.
So that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of movement in the last couple of years that's.
So we got, uh, we've got water coming in, the tin ceiling is showing signs of, of rust there.
Um, that's actually, if you go up there, the picture shows it as rust. If you go up there, it's actually rust holes. There's holes.
It's holes.
Ceiling above the balcony looks like not good. It bulkhead, it's just on and on and on.
And there's photos documenting everything. And he will be sending us the drone footage too of the roof.
Oh, that was nice. You missed that, Jody.
Wow.
So he's got a very nice drone.
And he can surveil the.
Yeah, he went right out, went around the perimeter of the eaves, so you could see the Boeing in the eaves. I got the, I asked him with COVID and everything, he's like, you don't mind if I peek over your shoulders? He said, oh, no, come right over. So we were all kinda hovered, watching his screen to see it. He's gonna send us the link so we can all see it.
Oh, good. Oh, very good.
But he actually went up and that's, he went up to the point of where you could sight the eave line and see how crooked that now is. He went up and inspected a lot of the missing slate shingles, a lot of the loose slate shingles that are coming, gonna come down.
Yeah, yeah.
This actually has a rubber membrane on the top, and he got close enough, you could see the rubber separating. So it's, it's quite a bit of work that needs to be done.
Well, so the, I guess the immediate thing is, is talking about someplace to go, probably temporarily.
Ideally, if we could come up with some options, as soon as possible. I think, I think we can. I mean, we're gonna have to have a special town meeting now. I mean, there's no way around that. I think we can move to a rental location uh, under our existing budget. I don't know that we can sign a lease, or that we'd even necessarily want to. We probably would go to the town for that. But there's a lot of moving parts here. I mean, we know this, they're probably even, in light of all this new information and, and what's going on with the economy, there'll still be some people who will push to fix this building. I wouldn't be surprised. That, which brings us to, they want us, they suggest that we hire an engineering company to come in and assess this whole review. I mean, we're, I, I mean, that seems like throwing good money after bad.
Right.
I mean, we already know that we, we have a million dollars worth of foundation work.
And now we have all this other.
Now every other floor has issues, including roof.
Well, and I really worry with the findings they're having with the roof and everything else, with what we knew before about the foundation, the way that gets fixed, you have to jack that up. Well, if everything else is bad above now, that number even on the bottom just went up because they may have to do some.
Support that and whatever.
More supports or engineering before they could jack it up to do that.
Right, right.
So I just think everything is just, and again, if you, what should I say? That foundation number of a million dollars is the number. Okay, you spent a million dollars. Well, guess, we still can't use it because you still have all these other things that he's flagging that needs to be fixed.
And our insurance company is really recommending that we look for a different building, obtain a different building.
Yeah.
Cost-wise than the previous.
That's their opinion, and I, I would tend to agree with them, but.
Well, I would question, I mean, well, how, how do you tackle a project that's not insurable? How do you?
Yeah, I don't know. That's true.
I suspect that if, if we went through those steps, if we got an engineer and they came up with a plan, and, and we, even if we went as far as legislatively got the funding to advance that plan, I suspect that the insurance company would work with us, because Sangaville has shown good faith and they were gonna fund this thing.
It did say that, that based on the progress, assuming progress and plans, we will reevaluate the coverage.
And it probably would be like, okay, here's a goal for you. In ninety days, you're gonna be here. They come back, yep, you're making progress. I'm guessing, but I.
Right.
I. I just don't see us going that route. I mean, we, we, I can't.
You're still back to, dump ten million dollars in this building and what are you doing? At the end of the day, you, you got two people working here four days a week.
That's right.
Correct, correct.
And you got an upstairs that, you know, the Masonic Hall in Guilford is not rented all the time. The building in Dover is not rented all the time. I mean, I just, I really don't believe there's a use in this area for another whole building restored, for a gathering place.
So I think the first step is to secure a location between now and September. The rest of this can be debated.
Right.
As, you know, as to which way you're gonna go, but we're not gonna get this done between now and September.
No, no.
And even if we went that route, the engineering route, you'd probably have to leave the premises to get it all done. They gotta jack the building.
Oh, yeah, the construction. That's right.
You're not gonna do any of that here. You're not gonna be able to operate in the building.
No.
That's what, so we got to have a place.
Right, to go.
Now, we've talked about like a temporary, like a temporary school classroom, we might be a little.
Oh, yeah, like a portable classroom.
Yeah, that we could work out of one of those if we can't secure rental property.
I did talk to, um, the person that owns the building right here, what's it, ninety-three Main Street or ninety-four Main Street? I did talk to them today. They would, he would be willing to do something with us. It's eight hundred square feet, includes electricity and fuel. Wouldn't know really, excuse me, what he would charge right now, we all negotiable, but.
Did you look at it yet?
I have not, I have not. They've done a lot of renovation to that building. It has a half bath. I mean, it might be big enough for Sarah and I to conduct normal business, but then you're still talking, we need to have storage somewhere, probably not in this facility, but in.
Yeah, well, we, Public Works Building is where we could put a lot of our stuff. Now, we might have to do some work up there to get it dry and safe and lockable, but we have plenty of storage up there. So the key with that building is for you to see, is it, is it physically large enough for you to operate?
Right.
Is there a meeting room in there?
No, no. It's just the ground floor. It's the ground floor, the top, the second floor is, um, the second floor is rented.
We're even gonna have to figure out where we do our select board meetings.
Oh.
Cause those have to be, we have to have space for people to attend.
I'm sure we could, between the Masonic Hall or even the school, I bet we could.
Or maybe even Grace Bible.
Or maybe Grace Bible. I'm just saying, I think there's other places around that we could.
But we've gotta put all that together.
Right, then I didn't know if, if you could fix up Public Works enough to make that feasible to, to work in there.
Might be able to. There's a heated bay there.
Yeah, or that one office, you know.
Like move the, this table, these chairs, those, they'll go up there and get through the winter.
Where it'd be minimal cost as far as renting. Yeah. But you'd have to get a contractor in there to get some work done.
Yeah.
Right, make it, but.
Look, gut it out, cheat rocket, paint it, put something down on the floor.
Have, have, have any of you ever been in the Catholic, I think that's the Catholic church that's making on the way up.
No, I was wondering about that too.
It doesn't look very big, I mean, relative to, like Grace Bible.
Right.
But.
I've never been in there.
I know he was at a meeting and he was eager to sell it.
Right.
He might be eager to rent it, but I have no idea that it would work, but that would be worth reaching out to him.
Okay.
I, I gotta believe there would be room for, you know, us to function there.
I would think there's gotta be plenty of room in that one. But I don't know what shape it's in, or.
Yeah.
I thought there was, I thought he mentioned he had a lot of stuff stored in there. Like kinda actually, between those three spots, one of those three would work. Temporary.
And you went, you went and looked at Guilford's property?
Guilford, yeah, it wouldn't work. It would just, when you first walk in, the first thing you walk into is a table. They're doing their business in the corner and the way it's set up, it, it wouldn't work. I think they only have one space left too.
It's like an office.
Yeah.
Before then multiples.
Yeah, yeah. When I looked at it back in the day there, it, it was just the town and that was it, and then one other. But we lost, missed out on that one.
I kinda like the, the town garage, I do.
I did, I.
Cause you know, I don't really, even if the, even if the, if the opposite end of it would work, you know, we had to meet down to the truck bay, what would we meet in the truck bay? I don't care for the meeting. All of them have a decent place to work.
We're not paying rent. You can pay someone to, to do the work that needs to be done to get it. Yeah, yes.
Look at the good measure. Give you an idea how much room it was. And if that was all empty, what would that mean?
Right.
Cause I mean, there is a bathroom in the back of it, so that part's there.
That might work.
I think ultimately, that's, location's the solution. That's probably where we should target, start renovating and turn it into what we want it to be. But.
And it, it might be worth looking, just getting a price on a public, you know, a movable.
Yeah, portable, can you rent a portable classroom?
A contractor's.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right?
Honestly, that might be the next option, if you can't find a rental. And if that doesn't work.
Just plop it over and.
Sure. Contract trailer.
Yep.
What about a, a workshop, or where do you, where do you wanna start engaging the public on this?
Well, I think, I think that's a really good idea, because we need to disseminate this information.
Yeah, I, I think I would post these documents.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Get these up.
Okay.
People are gonna listen to the meeting. I, I might even, we all know the people who are gonna be engaged on this.
Right.
Let's just go right to them. Say, you know, please check the website, got updated information on the condition of this building.
And I can work on getting some information by July sixth meeting and we can make that an, an open meeting in terms of this test.
Yeah, start updating everybody.
How hard is it on the website to add a tab? Or, so you know what I mean? You could actually, instead of trying to list this whole document on the page, have a something on the main page that says, you know, update of town hall or something like that, and then have something for a tab where you could start listing, cause I got an idea we're gonna have.
Lots of tabs.
Posting documents, conversations, yep.
I'll let Sarah work on that tomorrow. She's so good about that.
I don't know if, sounds easy, but I don't know how easy that is.
I don't know either.
But at least it would, I think it would make the, make the website less hungry.
Right, right, and you just.
Put it all together.
If you're checking on that, that's what you look at and.
Yep.
Yeah, you could set up a tab on this like you do with your agendas and everything.
Yeah, but as far as like all of this stuff, when we go to a workshop, as far as like you said about reaching out to people with concerns about the building, I would go the other way and I'd be reaching out to some of our local businesses to let them get an idea of what's going on so we can get their involvement, because if this tries to get pushed into fixing and the crazy part of where a mill right could go, I would just as soon have some of those people knowledgeable and upfront on the right side of this. I would just as soon have some of those people knowledgeable and upfront on the right side of this. Just so everybody knows.
Yeah, I mean, somehow we gotta get, so you're saying contact businesses here in Sangerville?
Yeah, I mean, I would, like Bridy, Matt, please, you know, I would let these people know that. I mean, this is kinda what was talked about in one of the meetings and we definitely had a couple of our businessmen speak up and say, no, that's not something we'd be interested in.
Right.
So.
I think we're, we're, there's going to be a push, I suspect, to hire an engineering firm to spend more money, to tell us how much money is gonna cost to fix this thing. Uh, the three of us, I think, are inclined to say, we already know enough so that we don't wanna proceed.
Right.
Just from the, the, the carpenter's view of the downstairs, of the foundation.
Right.
But that may not work, that, we may get a real push to do a full blown restoration plan. I gotta believe that's gonna be north of ten thousand dollars.
I would imagine it would be.
No, I would think a full blown, top to bottom one, for sure. That's not gonna be a.
Carpenter's called us forty-six, forty-nine, two years, three years ago.
Yeah, well, that guy, the way he sounded, he weren't.
So it's, so it's, yeah, I mean.
Yeah. And Carpenter, bef, a year ago, told me to double his figures for downstairs, so that's, that's conservatively a million dollars now. Easily a million dollars.
And that was when, that was a year ago he told you that?
He, a year ago, he told me to take it to six hundred.
Yeah.
So.
Wow, because now, I mean, it's, it's. And that was sort of during.
Well, another, another benchmark that I use is that the, the central hall was a two and a half million dollar project roughly fourteen years ago they finished it, okay? So, that's easily five million dollars today, and that, that means probably easily nine million dollars, but. I mean, so I think five is a lowball number. If you're gonna bring this back, stem the stem.
Well, I looked it up today just for the hell of it. I built my garage about fifteen years ago, I mean, my barn. And I bought seven sixteenths chipboard, that's what I put my ceiling in, and I have one exterior wall, and I paid, I know I paid four ninety-nine a sheet.
How much is it today?
That's twenty-six, thirty bucks a sheet right now.
There you go.
I mean, that's just one thing.
That's the multiple.
You know, what did you pay for a gallon of gas back then?
That's right.
How do you pay now?
And it's, and we're still back to. Two people, four days a week, you know.
In this building?
Yeah, we're using a, we're using five percent of the building.
We, yes, we use it for our meetings, but we, we don't have town meeting here, so.
No, we had, I bet, tonight's, between Bridy's here now, but the other two that was here earlier, this is the most people it's been in this room and.
Right.
It's packed.
I bet the planning board has more.
Especially we're discouraging people.
Honestly.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And that's because there's more members, I mean, but I don't, I don't think, we don't get that many people coming here for meetings.
No, no.
So, so you're gonna continue a, a rental search, you, you'll investigate a, a temporary building as an option, let's see what's available there. And then we can start, you know, putting our options together.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the meantime, spread the word. Let's, let's let everybody know what's happening.
That's right.
Because come September thirtieth, this is not an option.
So do, are we planning that the, our next meeting July sixth, that we would have, we're not gonna co-mingle a workshop with our meeting?
No, I don't think we're ready, I don't think we have anything to share yet. Now, if we, if we had, if we get some information.
Okay.
Well, this is gonna be out there, we're on tape, people listen, they're gonna know right now, and if you can get that stuff on the website, that's something, that's the only thing we have right now to share.
Yep.
So.
Do you wanna put that whole folder that I put together?
Oh.
From people who are interested.
Annual meeting?
No, um, a group came in looking for some, um, FOA information and I put all the information we had in the, in the folder.
Oh.
I don't know if that's something.
Let's go through it.
Yeah, it's a lot of pictures and this that we got from MMA really does a good job with.
Oh, yeah.
With the color, I mean, I have the colored pictures on my.
We're gonna put this entire eleven page thing online.
This is the newest, this is the most accurate.
The rest of it's just history.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is just the culminate, wrapping it, the whole thing up and what it is today, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on this right now? Okay.
We get it done in time, not, I don't know how long we're gonna be tonight, but we might be going up and just walking through the, walking through the town. We could adjourn from up there if everybody.
I did have though for town manager, um, I have the, China said mill rate.
Oh, yes.
Is that why Bridy's here?
Actually, I was interested in the other as well.
Oh, oh.
This all me or this past?
Yeah, I, I, I put in some of my numbers so you guys could see.
You saw the.
Is this the only copy?
Yeah. And the letters from.
Yeah, I heard, well, yeah, he was here and being, being very forthright about what the issues were, so.
Yeah. Now what are we looking at?
Mill rate.
Oh, oh.
I'm, I'm reading. So we've, I, if I'm reading these correctly, we had a spread between, uh, okay, fifteen-six to sixty-four, fifteen-six, yeah. So what's the proposal? What, what are you thinking?
Well, I would, I'd wanna.
You want these? I mean, we talked about this last year with the amount for the, it's the discount that.
It's the overlay that we.
The overlay, yeah.
Right.
But even if the lowest amount, what was your overlay, forty-five, you told me?
My, uh, at the lowest, if we go, um, no.
No, okay, I missed it.
Yeah, the lowest actually is thirty-one if you go down to point zero one six.
That gives us an overlay of thirty-one thousand, and how much overlay did we use last year?
Do we know?
Twenty-four or five.
Yeah. How much?
Twenty-four.
And that's kind of.
Yeah, it's kind of the number.
It's usually in that low to mid twenties.
Twenty, twenty-five.
I figured for you, I think, I figured the highest was twenty-five something.
Sure.
Is.
And I think we pushed it pretty tight last year.
Yeah.
Somebody was a little nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know somebody was.
Assuming that we've got all the numbers, I tried to make the budget format so that she could plug in this number into that line, assuming we've got them all right.
Yeah, and I just would like to double check, just make sure.
Exactly.
So where is, so the best overlay number, lowest overlay number you had goes down to thirty-one?
Yeah, it came to all of that.
Yeah, and the high, I mean, the highest would be sixty-five. No, I mean, that.
I never.
But now.
What's the mill rate at sixty-five? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The mill rate is point zero one six four.
Okay, but we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
It's still lower than what it.
Yeah, sixteen, yeah, sixteen, sixty-five. Yeah, so it's still decreasing the mill rate.
I'm still, and I know I said this last year, and I'm waiting for Josh to come in, cause Josh has gotta be, I'm hoping this year Josh is gonna be equally as concerned, but the home sales in our town are still off the chart. And I know what, how we're evaluated is the way we're supposed to do it, but the reality is, is a lot of these houses are selling for two and three times what we're appraised at, and what I'm afraid of, when Josh comes in this time and he shows us the state's numbers of our evaluation, eventually this is gonna catch up because they're going off home sales. And our percentage is gonna, if we're not gonna be out of the water this year, I am gonna be very surprised. I think our gap is gonna be.
You do get to, if the gap is large enough, you have to do.
You have to do a reval.
A re- revaluation, but it doesn't change, it doesn't affect this. What it costs to run the town is what it costs to run the town, it's just gonna change your mill rate because everybody's assessed value is different.
Correct, hundred percent. And actually, if, if, if everything I just said to people that are listening, I don't want everybody to get all nervous about a reval, the reality is, is whether we, whatever our evaluation is, we're only spending X amount of money.
Right.
That number does not change.
Right.
If everybody's evaluation goes up, the reality is, is that just means the mill rate goes down.
Except revals are expensive, hundred percent, so we don't really wanna spend the money.
No, but I.
So.
I'm pretty sure we're gonna be forced, unless the housing market flocks fast.
Well, and it may, it may soften a little.
Yeah, well, interest rates are, I mean, mortgages.
There you go.
Mortgage is up thirty percent, six months.
Not changing it.
You don't think so?
Well, it's not yet, but.
The houses right now are still selling two and three times higher than the appraised value.
And the state's two years behind, so we should, we should be starting to.
That's what I'm saying, we were starting to see some of those numbers last year.
What about a thirty-five thousand dollar overlay? Is it, do you have an example of that?
No, I've got a thirty-one, but I can go, I can go punch in.
Do you have a forty?
I have a, I have a thirty-one and a forty-eight.
Okay, well, what's the difference in mill rate?
One six, two zero, and one six zero, so if I do one six one, one six one.
You're gonna split the baby right there.
Right, right.
I'm fine with, I'm, we know we're gonna come in between those two.
Right.
And that's plenty, wouldn't you think?
Oh, in terms of the overlay.
The overlay, yeah.
Um, the only thing you, you might wanna think about is, are you over in some budget lines? And would a higher overlay, having already raised it, mean that you don't have to go back to the town?
Except we can't spend it.
Can't spend it.
Can't spend it?
No, you can't spend it.
So it doesn't, I mean, we gotta ask for the money anyway.
How you doing?
Adding the slush fund. That's why there's such a slush fund.
That's true. Well, and, and prior, you had your overlay in your budget and outside your budget, so you were basically doubling it.
Right, yep.
So.
Yeah, I like, where he was going.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's split it in the middle.
Yep, and then, so if you put that number that we want for the mill, then it will.
It'll go back, you should end up with something high thirty, low forties.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely, cause.
And, and a good number, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a lot higher than we had last year.
Higher amount of overlay, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but with less mill rate, correct.
And a lower mill rate, yeah.
Right.
Safer or less money?
So that's, good, good, that's right. Win-win. Okay. So when we.
Looks like we're about to spend some money though, so that's fine.
Hundred percent.
And, uh, heating oil is not gonna be cheap this way.
But hopefully.
So do you, do you want to go run that so that we can prove it and sign it and you can send out the bills?
Yeah, let's do that. Yep.
You wanna recess?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, uh, make a motion, it is, uh, four forty-five, make a motion that we recess.
Oh.
Wait a second?
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay, we are now recessed. All right, it's, uh, five o'clock and I make a motion that we go back into session.
Okay.
We are in session. Uh, we, uh, Laura brought back, uh, a recalculation. It looks like we could have a mill rate of fifteen-nine-four, which is really nice to see a fifteen handle, and that still provides us with an overlay of thirty-seven thousand plus, which we've never approached that number, so we should be really safe, and we've, we've set a new low for many years. Uh, so I would make a motion that we accept the mill rate as I read it.
Second.
Any other questions or discussions on this?
I, anybody remember the last time we saw fifteen?
We were.
I wasn't on the budget committee, so it's been quite a few.
Yeah, I. You're going back there ten years, huh?
Oh, yeah, more, I think, more.
Is there any way we could, is there, you don't have to do.
No, it's, I, I've got, I've got all that data at home.
I was just curious if anybody, I mean, are we fifteen years ago?
Oh, you're pretty close.
Is it?
Uh, but it wasn't, you don't go back much further and it was twelve and thirteen too.
No, I know.
It was like, went right off the cliff.
Right, once it started going, it just didn't stop.
Yeah, yeah.
So, huh, no, that was the only.
Um, all in favor?
Yes.
If it passes, we can get this out. Next item is, uh, road commission report.
Chris was gonna bring in his contract, he wasn't able to make the meeting, so we'll have to put that to aside.
He, but he's hasn't, he's put together contracts for you, that's. Uh, along this topic.
Culverts.
We, yeah, well, uh, what do I wanna say? Perix excavation.
Yeah.
We had a meeting with them.
Yeah, and after that meeting, I did reach out to Zach. I just basically told him that I was in hopes that, you know, between him and us, we could come to some sort of a resolve without, you know, the town expecting to eat all this. He got back at me today, basically, his offer is he would redo all the culverts at the same hourly material rates that he charged last year. The only thing is, is, his suggestion is, is he would do it with the road closed so he could do the culverts in one piece, which allow him to do them faster, quicker, which would save a little bit on me.
Well, that's kinda, because that's, he said that was part of the reason they failed, is that he wasn't able to do them that way.
Right.
Which, I mean, we, I, I listened to that tape a couple of times.
So did I.
It, it was interesting that, in the, early in the tape, it's described as an inconvenience, and by the time you get to the end of the tape, at least my opinion, that was, that became the scapegoat.
Right.
It failed, obviously it failed, we had to do them that way.
Right, that was really the, the root cause, I thought, after listening to the tape, was because we did one side and then the other.
Progression.
And the guy that he brought, well, you can't do them that way.
Right, right, we went on that way.
The other thing that was kinda interesting, I know, early in the meeting, the gentleman that he brought with him made some comment about a contract and I, the, we've, there's been some opportunity to speak to people in, with some legal background, and I think, it was interesting, I think he was on the wrong track, I think there may be a state law that does require a contract, but the requirement is on the contractor.
Correct.
That's the, my, so we'll see, anyway, I, his offer to redo at the same price isn't really an offer of anything, in my opinion.
No.
No, I mean, I, I kinda, I didn't throw it out as saying we would accept it, but when I first initially talked to him, I kinda threw it out there was, you know, we wanna, my interpretation, we wanna work together on this, without him eating it all, us eating it all. Is there a way we could do this? We got some other projects coming up, he's got material, you know, could he do something with us that way or trucking or, you know what I mean, something to make it work on both sides of the road. It's not really how it come back, so.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, at this point, I, I would, I don't think we have any, any other option other than to just turn it over to legal.
Right, and get an opinion.
I would let them read all the doc, really, the tape.
The tape is.
The tape is gonna be probably where he or she starts.
Yeah.
And then we'll follow their advice from here.
I mean, I, you could provide the, the attorney the breakdown of the numbers of what it, what we paid.
Yep.